Number sixteen, presentation update on Gaucher Aquatic Park.
Good evening, Mayor, and you know what I'm going to say.
Oh, yeah.
I'm so happy to be here.
You're smiling, it's good enough.
Per council's request, staff is here this evening just to give you an update on FRAC. And I want to start off with our city attorney to just give you an update on insurance.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. The council requested an update regarding the insurance status. USA Swimming was able to provide additional insurance documentation for the city. Based on the additional insurance documentation, FRAC does have insurance for commercial general liability, umbrella insurance, and accidental medical. The insurance is primary and non-contributory for general liability. That means that the insurance will pay out first before it comes to the city's insurance to pay out. There is also a waiver of right of recoveries which addresses a subrogation question that was there previously. This coverage has been confirmed by the insurance agent for the city, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions? Alright, so, which that means is FRAC is covered, which was our primary concern last meeting if I recall, and that issue has now been resolved. FRAC remains in place until they can get things resolved and be up full speed running. It seems to be a very efficient way to do it in that their insurance is primary. We're not going to take a hit from the city if something should happen under the FRAC umbrella.
That's correct, and their certificate of liability insurance, the policy is through January first of 2020.
Okay. January, and so, go ahead, yeah.
So, through January first of 2020, again, just dealing with the liability issues here, would be incumbent upon us to make sure that if we go forward here, that that policy is reinstated. How do we do that?
That's typically a staff issue. I'd look to Michael, City Manager Rock, on that, but typically what they do is the staff just monitors it as it comes in, and the new certificates of liability are provided within generally thirty days prior to its expiration.
Correct. The city should receive the next one-year insurance premiums prior to the start of that new term. So FRAC should submit to the city that they've basically renewed their insurance for the next year.
Okay. And have we had conversations with their staff? Is that their intention to do so? Do we know that?
Well, that...
We have not had any conversations.
Okay. Would the Vice President care to speak on the issue if you're prepared or willing?
So FRAC would, of course, if the city decides to let FRAC continue in place without undertaking all of the different machinations that are going to be proposed, would, of course, once we hit December, as a matter of course, a matter of routine, just provide another certificate of insurance that matches the one that we've already provided with all of the supporting endorsements? As insurance policies, especially through big companies, run on a calendar year. So that's why the January first, 2020 expiration date.
Okay. Thank you very much, Holly. Any other questions or comments?
I would request that if that was the case, City Manager, that we have something documented by November, that the renewals and process or something for thirty days, as our city mentioned.
Okay. What typically happens is their carrier will contact them and say, "By the way, your insurance is, you know, due to be renewed." They should get a letter from their insurance carrier probably in October or November saying that it's, you know, "We need to renew your insurance for the next year." So they'll probably get that reminder from their carrier, and we'll check in with them through our staff.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
My concerns still go back to the fact that we have an entity that is not able to enter into contract. An insurance policy is a contract, can be voidable, not saying it is, but it could be, may not be able to be renewed. Also, we do have issues with employees. As FRAC said at one of their first presentations, that they paid their coaches. So we have workman's compensation type of liability exposure as well should one of the coaches get injured on our property. With that, I'm still uncomfortable with our overall liability exposure of what's there, because the other flip side to this coin is the simple fact, and at this point, I don't have any questions for anyone, so I see Holly heading to the mic, but I do not have any questions for her. We're not mitigating our risk. And the fact that all of this came to light, and the city is basically turning a blind eye to some things, it still exposes us and sets precedence for future issues to come up. If the next organization comes up and we make another, you know, exemption for them, I don't mind having FRAC having enough time to go try to resolve this, but in the meantime, we need to protect the city, and that may mean looking at option two or three so that we have the coaches covered under workman's comp, so we're not exposed there. It goes way beyond just the kids getting hurt. You know, the primary goal that we started was keeping the kids in the pool, and I think we've all agreed to that. We're going to find a way to keep the kids in the pool. That's not there. The sad part about it is, is we're dealing with a problem that none of the five of us or anyone within the city created. This was created many years ago. The trigger mechanisms happened in 2017, and it came to light here in the last sixty days. We need to do what's in the best interest of the city to protect us all the way around. So in the interim, I go back to the root cause of, we need to take care of us as a city, get the kids back in the pool, which is a moot point, but we may have to undertake this for a period of time with coaches that are paid similar stipend or something out of the city so that it's covered under workman's compensation and such, and even working with other nonprofits where you have volunteer coaches. Most of those organizations still have coverage for volunteers under workman's compensation in case they do get injured while they're out working and serving the community and stuff. With that, I just think that right now, to continue on, the city is starting to expose itself more and more by kind of turning a blind eye just for the sake of keeping the kids in the pool. I think we can keep the kids in the pool, potentially pull it in-house for a while and give FRAC the time that they need to get their act together and solve all their problems with IRS and F T B and State Board and Secretary of State and everyone else, because the whole idea is just to keep the kids swimming, but protect ourselves. So, you know, I did reach out, as I'm a life agent as well. I reached out to the Insurance Commissioner today. Have not received back an answer as of yet, but the question came back to, because insurance is a contract, and under the rules with Secretary of State, when you're suspended, contracts can be voided. There's no suing rights. They went through all kinds of things there, but can they simply cancel that insurance? Because it is voidable since they are suspended. Those are the questions I have. I think it opens up a can of worms. A workman's compensation issue is a potential liability because we own the facilities. Want to keep the kids in the pool, but I think we need to look at something different in the interim. So, with the proposals that you were told to look at, Mr. McIntyre.
Holly, did you have a comment?
I believe Mr. Chaffin has a copy of the insurance, and I'm ninety-five percent sure that the insurance that FRAC has through USA Swimming covers workers' compensation for their coaches. So I'm not sure where we're trying to go here other than to highlight the fact that a layperson messed up on her filings. I get what you're saying. It is true FRAC can't enter into contracts, but FRAC's agreement with USA Swimming that provides the insurance is that it just has to be a club in good standing. It has no basis on whether or not it is approved by the Secretary of State, Franchise Tax Board, the IRS, God, or anyone else. It is up to USA Swimming whether or not the club is a club in good standing. If you'd like to view the insurance certificates themselves, I'm sure Mr. Chaffin can provide you with a copy if he hasn't already.
Are you aware of any workman's compensation mentioned?
I'm looking at the Certificate of Liability Insurance right now. It does not list workers' compensation and employees' liability in the certificate of liability I've been provided at least. And it is available if any member of the council would like to take a look at it.
Okay. And then, the employees, are they FRAC employees? Or are they city employees coaching FRAC kids?
They are FRAC, they are in FRAC. They are not city employees.
So, based on what we're hearing, they are not covered even today for workman's compensation insurance?
There are two items here. We currently don't have anything on workers' compensation and employees' liability with regards to their certificate of liability insurance. Whether or not we receive it, if they have employees, they are required to carry it. However, many nonprofits do not have employees. So, for example, volunteers are not considered employees under state law that would trigger workers' compensation insurance. Independent contractors likewise. However, if there are true employees, then they would be required under state law to carry workers' compensation insurance.
Okay.
But all that being said, they're still FRAC, you know, they're still employed by FRAC, not the city. So if there's a workers' compensation issue, it would have to be taken up with FRAC because those employees or volunteers or paid employees, either way, are paid or volunteers of FRAC, not the city.
Under what circumstances, if you have a workman's compensation issue, would their other insurance that we've mentioned not cover them? Why do we have to have workman's comp if they have this other huge insurance policy already in place?
Workers' compensation, they have different, different policies have different umbrellas of coverage. And workers' compensation is actually usually for the benefit of the employer because it prevents the employee from basically suing the employer, and instead they have to use the workers' compensation process. So that's between the employer and the employee. Workers' compensation does not cover third parties like the city. So if it is not a city employee, even if FRAC did have workers' compensation, the city would not be subject to the city's workers' compensation. In other words, we wouldn't receive the benefit of that umbrella.
So if there's an issue as an employee, whether they would normally file a workman's compensation claim? Is the city in any way on the hook because FRAC is apparently not covered?
You know, there's a thousand different ways to get injured, but, and so I don't want to give you an absolute yes or no, but the vast majority of the cases, the city would be covered by the accident, the general commercial liability, the individual injury, these sorts of things. The city does have coverage from under USA Swimming and FRAC right now.
Okay.
The workers' compensation is a separate umbrella. So if an employee were to go out, slip, hit their head on the pool, or maybe, or arm, and break an arm, they could do a workers' compensation claim against FRAC. They would not be able to do that against the city. But if they did try to sue the city for that injury, it would be subject under the personal injury umbrella that we have. It's already been provided as part of the insurance.
I'm glad you're a lawyer, not me. Boy, I tell you what.
I obviously made a bad choice in my prior lives, and apparently, end up in law.
Were you swimmer before? No, it's a bad joke.
Yeah. Through the mayor.
Yeah.
Bradley, maybe you can answer, I'll have to ask him. Are your swim coaches, are they paid employees or volunteers?
I volunteer.
Okay. Correct.
So it's a little bit of both.
Yes. Okay. I just, just checking. It'd be great if all three of you were volunteers, we'd be happy trails. I know. Okay.
Do you have something, Grace?
The reason, we're trying to find some creative solutions here, and I think getting to the end of it is that we're, the students, we do not, I do not, let me rephrase that. I do not want the students' standing in USA Swimming to be lost. That their standings to be, can continue where they're at, because that's, that's, that's a lot of commitment, a lot of work that students have done, and I do not want them to lose that. And at the same time, I'm conflicted because it's unfortunate that FRAC's in the situation that it's in. And, and the insurance piece becomes more complicated as we take one layer of the onion, we take another, and the onion just gets a little stinkier and more difficult to chop and understand. I'm thinking that there's an opportunity to perhaps look at FRAC continuing until May 2020. If they do not have everything in order by May 2020, the decision will be made by us, the council, of what needs to happen after that. Because if it's not in order by then, I think that it won't, it's not going to get any better. You have the insurance at this point. We're willing to, the students will finish their, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, finish their, you know, standing in their swimming in May, so there's no loss in their time. And then, whatever happens after that, the students will continue with a new opportunity, a beginning. So I am, that's where I'm leaning towards, that by May of 2020, because it ends, that's the fall, I believe is the fall swimming schedule. And, and I feel like we've given it the best shot and opportunity.
Through the mayor. Do you have more to present to us? Because if you do, I'd sure like to hear it before we start getting towards solutions and decisions.
No, we're there. I mean, I don't. I would say that I like the idea of FRAC continuing a little bit longer, whatever that longer is, because that will give our staff, if needed, the ability to have swim coaches ready to go. You know, we will be ready with whatever council decides if there's a little bit more time given to FRAC.
So what would that timeframe be?
I would say at the minimum, two months, to the max of whatever council wants to give FRAC the opportunity to become a nonprofit.
So we're looking at a January first. I just want to follow up, because my biggest issue here has always been the liability, besides getting, keeping the swimmers in the pool. If I'm hearing you right, Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Manager, we're covered through the USA, or USA insurance policy?
Yes.
Okay. So now it's just a matter of who's going to operate the program for a period of time. And it would seem to me, and I don't know how this stuff, Councilman Shaw is much more versed than me, but if the insurance thing's going to come up in January anyway, and that's about three months out, that seems like a reasonable period to try to figure, figure things out. I don't know if FRAC wants to respond to a three-month extension or not, but...
Well, through the mayor, before we do that, it's my recommendation that we come back to the council in any event in less than three months with an update on where we are with FRAC and with any other preparations that we would need to do as an alternative to that, if that were to pass. So it's my recommendation, we come back in less than three months, and we can have perhaps a more detailed set of options for you at that point, assuming that there are certified coaches, if needed, that are willing to either work for the city or as a separate nonprofit. That will give FRAC time to, to address the issues that they have with the 501(c)(3) status. And it would give the city time to prepare for the program to be taken in by the city if necessary or by some other group. So I would strongly recommend that we do come back in no less, you know, no more than three months with an update on where we are on all of those issues.
Through the mayor, I just want to go back for a point of clarification with my fellow council member. The kids maintain their individual scores. They lose nothing to my understanding. You know, if something happens to a club or they change clubs, they maintain their progress, so nothing would be ever jeopardized there, so...
Not that I wouldn't say that you're completely on that. Is that an accurate statement? Would their good standings not change if there was a different group that took over? I'm just curious.
If we're going to have a dialogue, we need people at the podium, please.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, Mayor.
Our swimmers are considered USA Swimming members. Any USA Swimming member, they have their times in a database. Their swimmers, their times are fine as long as they are being coached by a USA Swimming member-certified coach. Once that changes, whether it be a volunteer or a paid city employee, the times are still in the database, but they're actually not allowed to practice with a coach that is not USA Swimming certified. There can be several issues that arise from trying to do something like that.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation. I appreciate that.
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
So the bottom line here is, is they're covered. The insurance is covered. Their employees are covered. They're covered. The city is not liable. So the main concern is, we'll have staff review their contract in December, making sure that their insurance contract goes forward January first, as long as that goes through peacefully and everything, there's no, no problems. I'll agree with Councilmember Espandault that we review this nine months from now. Come back nine months, give them a chance to get their nonprofit certifications, and nine months from now, our staff could be prepped for whatever needs to be done. And hopefully, we'll discuss it then. And there's no need for these folks to come back every two weeks and stress them out. They're covered. Their staff's covered. Their coaches are covered. We're not liable. That's the bottom line. And then, nine months from now, we will discuss it. As long as they show proof, January first, we should all be good and happy. And then, that's the recommendation I would like to make, if it's all possible.
Any more comment before we...
Yeah, through the mayor, I just want to count, Vice Mayor Cordos. I just want to clarify that I also take the recommendation of our city manager that we come back in three months or whatever that recommendation, to really monitor the progress. I'm in supportive of that.
Okay, just to monitor, just to monitor it.
Well, to see the progress. I want to make sure that the liability piece of it and the workman's comp and all those issues are...
But staff takes, staff could take care of that for us. It doesn't, as long as, staff will bring it to us if it's not right.
Correct, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that our city manager just made a recommendation that I'm supporting.
Fair enough. I would concur with my fellow council members, because Councilmember Moon Garden said this before and our city manager. Let's truncate this into a beginning of December. Let's see where we're at, because that's where it's all truncating. Insurance gives them three more months to figure everything out. Still personally uncomfortable with the liability, because I understand that quite well, and there is, because attorneys sue anyone. But if it's this council's wishes, let's give them three months. But at some point, we've got to, we've got to make a decision, and they've got to get everything straightened out so we can move forward.
Right, I agree. I think it's going to be a time-consuming process. I don't even know, I don't know ins and outs, the details, but I know maybe three months might not be enough time to get squared away and be an official 501(c)(3). However, I do concur that an extension is not only the best course right now, but it's also just simply a matter of respect. This organization's been in place for decades. They made an honest unintentional mistake. The main concern was keeping, keeping the kids in the pool. I agree with that. I also agree with liability as our number one concern as far as our responsibilities here. My concern with that has been answered sufficiently tonight. I would like to follow up and to get the answer on workman's comp once and for all during that three-month window, but that would be my inclination as well, to extend until January one. Do I hear a motion? Or if we're ready? Do we even need a motion?
No, we don't need a motion. It's just discussion.
This is just a, action is discussion, so that's our direction.
Mr. Mayor, before you do give the direction, would you be willing to open this up to public comment?
I would be more than willing to do that. We don't have any, so...
Oh.
Oh.
Good evening. My name is Pete Backus, and I've been monitoring the process of the council and FRAC. I've had a relationship with FRAC in the past, and I'm in the recreation industry, much like the city is with the gap. I'd be remiss not to caution the city that when you're a small employer, worker comp for your employees is very important. If someone does get hurt, then the liability is not the incident, but all this background and the paperwork and the proper contracts and filings. Also, when you're a small employer, you're liable for payroll taxes, unemployment insurance, disability insurance, all the things that a small employer pays when they give a W-2 employer a paycheck. And I don't think any of that is going on. So I would caution that the city take it step by step. Make sure all these things are in place as fast as possible. If an incident does occur, all this will come out, and I think the city is being irresponsible in this approach. Even with the time gap of two or three months, it's a liability.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else care to speak? Yep, go ahead. You guys can queue up or do your thing.
Yeah, councilmember named Dale McDowell, and I've been listening to this, and it's, to me, it's something that is very, very unfortunate that a mistake was made or whatever happened. But you're floating out liability, and when you start talking about insurance companies and who's responsible for this, and yeah, they'll take it. That may be said now, but when it comes down to the point, you don't know what you are. And some, do you have a kid, turn sixteen-year-old, that get a driver's license? Do you let them drive a car without the insurance and say, "Whoa, well, I forgot to, yeah, I didn't do this"? And if an accident takes place? What's going to happen? So until you can get everything exactly the way it's supposed to be, I can't see going, and it's very unfortunate for the kids. I'm not going against them whatsoever. But it's, the liability is just, you can't say, until you can say exactly what you have, you've got this, this, everything's in place, that's where it should be, the way it should be approached. Not just taking these chances, "Well, we can go and get by for two or three months." You don't know. There's no guarantee on that. And that's a lot of liability out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Just for your information, they are covered. They are insured, as we've been told earlier today. So, did one of you two ladies want to speak? I thought you raised your hand.
I was going to, but I will not.
Okay. Very good.
Go ahead. Through the mayor. Sharon, please go to the podium, please. Sorry. Since the last gentleman, or a couple gentlemen ago brought up...
Since the last gentleman, or a couple of gentlemen's ago brought up the workers' comp issue and stuff like that, by any chance, would FRAC be interested in making your other two swim coaches volunteers till this matter's taken care of? And that would take some more issues off the board.
We would absolutely love to be volunteer coaches, all of us.
So there we go. No workers' comp problems, everybody's insured, and everybody's moving on smoothly. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Through the, through the mayor. City Manager, I'm hoping that we can have further discussion on this whole idea of just determining in public that you can just arbitrarily make people unemployed to volunteers, and I'm, I'm not in agreement with you, Vice Mayor, at this moment with that. I think that that's, could be misleading and harmful in the discussion of what we're trying to do, so, thank you.
Definitely your decision, but it's not, we're not making that require, you're not, we're not going to take a paycheck away from people like that. But if it's an option, it's an option, and that's exactly right, we do not have the authority to make you do that. But we'll just leave that to you to decide, yes.
Okay, just to let you guys know, we actually, we volunteer a lot already, so putting out some hours for no pay is nothing to us. It's, and I know you're not asking me, but I'm telling you, if that's what it takes to save our kids, save our team, we're there.
All right. I think we are, are you clear on where we are? Is FRAC clear on where we are, where we're moving?
We'll be back in December.
Okay.
Yes, I need to be clear as well, so the direction from the city council is that we'll come back in approximately three months with an update on where we are with FRAC's issues and, and where the program is.
I think this second meeting in December would be great.
Okay.
Because I'll be sitting here.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I wasn't thinking that far ahead, but that is true.
No, but anyway.
I make a motion for that.
Yeah. Thank you, I think, what?
It's just staff's recommendation.
Anyway, it was a discussion, and thank you for the dialogue, we really appreciate it. And thank you for everybody else's opinion out here, too.
Thank you.
Sir, did you have anything further?
No.
All right.
Thank you.